Good afternoon, everyone. I apologize for the slight delay. The reason why we're waiting is I'm not entirely sure whether one of the other speakers is able to make it. And it seems, after to-ing and fro-ing, that he might not be able to make it after all, and that is Minister Luhut Pantritan. If he does join us later, I'll make the introductions at that point of time. But in the meantime, perhaps we could start with today's session. It's really wonderful to see everyone in this room. I think it's a testimony to the importance of the topic as well as its great significance for the region. This is actually the first year that the Shangri-La Dialogue has devoted an entire special session to infrastructure development. And I believe it would be apparent to all in the room that the issue has really moved to take center stage in strategic rather than merely economic or developmental terms. In a piece for the Straits Times today, I argue that although Beijing has repeatedly denied that strategic and security motivations drive the Belt and Road Initiative, infrastructure development is now front and center of great power relations and competition. Now, before we turn to our panelists, I'd just like to highlight one important point, and that's to note that infrastructure development is critical for the region. The Asian Development Bank estimates that the region needs to invest at least 5.7% of its aggregate GDP in infrastructure through to 2030 to maintain its growth momentum and to tackle poverty. So we've heard some news recently of pushback that has made the headlines since Sri Lanka ceded control of the Hambantota Port to China after defaulting on loans. But offers to develop a country's infrastructure, especially when dovetailed with local development initiatives that China has tried to do, isn't something that can be lightly turned down. So whatever concerns might be, offers to develop a country's infrastructure are enticing, particularly if there aren't alternatives. So today's topic has been framed broadly enough to consider both China's BRI as well as responses to it by the United States and its allies and partners. And I'm really privileged and honored today to be introducing a really sterling group of panelists. Let's begin now with introducing Minister Inkbot Nyama. He's Mongolia's Minister of Defense, and he is seated—
Right here.
Actually, over to my right, excuse me. Minister Utang Duen sits to my left. He's the National Security Advisor and Union Minister for the Ministry of Investment and Foreign Economic Relations in Myanmar. And to his left is Governor Tadashi Maeda. He's the governor of the Japan Bank for International Cooperation. And to his left at the end, but certainly not least, is Professor Lan Sing Seung, Professor of International History and Politics at the Graduate Institute of International and Development Studies in Geneva. He's also the director of the Center of One Belt and One Road Studies. So we have quite a representative panel. Unfortunately, we have no one from the United States, and General Pantritan, Indonesia's coordinating minister for maritime affairs, might or might not be able to join us. I had a word with the panelists beforehand, and they've all very gamely agreed that we could launch straight into a round of questions from me and then from the floor to give us all more time for questions and answers. And I think we would all like to extend our appreciation for that. My first question is directed to Ministers Nyama and Utang Duen. An ADB report advises that raising infrastructure spending should be a priority for both of your countries. Additionally, in Myanmar's case, it has warned that the lack of infrastructure services is a major constraint to development. It also considers Mongolia to be at a high risk of debt distress. Could you please let us all know in the room what or how your country thinks about the BRI? Is it closer to what U.S. Vice President Michael Pence has described as a constricting belt and a win-win road that drowns you in debt and compromises sovereignty? Or is it more of what President Xi Jinping of China describes as win-win cooperation? Perhaps we could start with Minister Nyama.
Thank you very much, Dr. Cork, for this warm welcome. First, let me say a few words regarding ISIS, or the double-I, double-S. I think they have done a tremendous job in bringing us here together. I'd like to thank them. My thanks also go to the Singapore hosts for the warm reception. We are all here to ponder on the situation around our countries. So we believe that in the past few years, there has been tremendous change and transformation in Asia. And Asia's rise throughout the past quarter century has been nothing but remarkable. Yet, in the near term, conditions are expected to become tough because of the emerging markets and the developing economies. This certainly includes Myanmar. So we have a situation where there's change and transformation, but the economic situation for emerging markets like Myanmar remains tough. There are challenging headwinds, and these headwinds are compounded by the reality that we are now entering a second year of what has become a major power trade war, or at least tensions, an event that poses a unique set of challenges by themselves. So for our region, at least East Asia and the Pacific, we are the world's fastest-growing region. Myanmar in particular is expected to experience some of the strongest growth in our part of the world. 6.8% is the projected growth for the coming year. Our economic outlook is looking good, but central to sustaining this growth will be scaling up major infrastructure. Without development of infrastructure, we will not be able to achieve our goals. So we are spending, or also include focus, on major Belt and Road Initiative, infrastructure projects under the new China-Myanma Economic Corridor, CMEC. Under this economic corridor, we expect to have deep-seap ports, railway, and even new city developments, just to name a few. For Myanmar, we seek to take full advantage of Asia's rise and particularly China's economic rise. But we must also seek to ensure that our development approach and our security posture remains flexible and that it is adaptive to the situation around us. Myanmar has recently integrated into the international system in ways that appeared impossible just a few years ago. Our peace and security domains are likewise influenced by the situation around us. That is why we believe that it is important to take full advantage of China's economic rise so that we can meet the challenges that we face. We believe that the Belt and Road Initiative embodies a global shift, and we are confident that for countries such as Myanmar, which face critical infrastructure gaps, the BRI offers us opportunities for the new 21st-century partnership.
Thank you so much. Perhaps I could follow up with one question. You mentioned that you're going to be looking towards taking full advantage of China's economic rise. Are there any concerns given your complex history with China? In fact, I think some analysts consider that one reason why Myanmar opened up in 2011 was because of its desire to try to distance itself from China or to avoid an over-reliance from China.
Indeed. We would like to see Myanmar progress in the right direction. We do not want to put all our eggs in one basket. But at the moment, we have a 2,000-kilometers-plus border with China, and China is an important partner politically and economically. So we have major projects with China. That includes oil and gas pipelines that flow from Chaochu on the Indian Ocean to the hinterland in China, to Kuming, and then onward to other provinces in China. So we have physical connectivity with China, but we are also long-term, longtime friends. So we talk to each other to seek ways and means to improve the economy and to have mutually beneficial cooperation.
Thank you so much. That was Minister Tang Duen. Now, could we turn to Minister Inkbot Nyama, please?
First of all, I'd like to say that as all the neighbors of China, Mongolia is very much connected to the economy of China. And our future, to a very big extent, depends on how China develops in the future. And that's why this initiative of Belt and Road is also, I would say, an important part of our strategy to develop our country in the future. Today, Mongolia pursues a policy of linking its infrastructure, such as transportation, energy, and telecommunications, with its neighboring countries as well as regional countries. And we have initiated the idea of linking our infrastructure network with, first of all, with our two neighbors, China and Russia. And this initiative led to a project called Stip Road. And the main purpose of this project was to connect Russia and China through Mongolia by building railroads, highways, oil and gas pipelines, as well as high-voltage electricity transmission lines. And the initiative was supported by the leaders of China and Russia. And a program, Mongolia-China-Russia Economic Corridor, was developed. And in 2016, we expanded the Stip Road project and transformed it into a development road initiative, which covers more diverse sectors and ranges. And the creation of Mongolia-China-Russia Economic Corridor, in our opinion, will enable Mongolia to be a part of the regional economic integration. And it is also important for diversifying Mongolian economy, which is now mainly based on the mining industry. And several countries promote an initiative to build a joint energy network covering North-East Asian region. And in this network, which is called the North-East Asian Supergrid, they would use Mongolian potentials of vast solar and wind resources for energy generation. And we are also interested to be a part of such a network and ready to contribute our efforts for very tangible and effective results. Such international and regional organizations like United Nations and Asian Development Bank and investment and financing organizations are supporting these initiatives. And because Mongolia has a high level of mutual political understanding and trust with all its neighbors and countries in the region, and because the country has no disputed problems with all of them as well, I think we have a very good potential to add, to make such ideas a reality. In short, we believe that such a network of infrastructure, which involves many countries' common interests, would be one of the guarantees of our security and stability, and also guarantees of security and stability of each participant, because they would all have the common interest in developing such projects in a peaceful and mutually beneficial manner.
Thank you so much. So it sounds to me, both from listening to the minister from Mongolia as well as the minister from Myanmar, that, if I'm not wrong, you perceive the Belt and Road Initiative as a win-win outcome for your countries. So are there any challenges that you're facing? For instance, in the case of Myanmar, I understand that there are some protests against some of these projects, which might have started prior to the Belt and Road, but which have since been subsumed under the Belt and Road Initiative. Are these widespread? How do you assess them?
From the very beginning, we have made sure that we have a win-win situation. We want to make sure that all these projects are mutually beneficial. There have been numerous proposals from our friends from China regarding infrastructure development, but we have decided to honor early harvest program and to take up certain projects that are needed at the moment and that are good for both China and Myanmar. To give you an example, we have agreed to have a high-speed rail connection between China and Myanmar, but we have agreed to do that from Kuming and to the border of Myanmar, which is a town called Muxi, and from Muxi to Lashu for a start. Then, from there, we will go on to see how we can progress from that first project. We have also agreed to a deep-seap port in Chaochu on the Indian Ocean coast. The situation there is that we will do what we consider a need-based project, which means that instead of the billions and billions of dollars that are projected for this deep-seap port, we will start with a $1.2 billion project and then see how we can progress from there. It would be a demand base. If there's more demand, we can increase the area and the size of the project.
Thank you. So we've heard from both the ministers. It seems that the Belt and Road Initiative appears to be very much a win-win outcome for both of them. Could I turn now to Professor Seung from the Center for One Belt, One Road, One Belt, One Road Studies? Given what we've heard from the two ministers, do you think some of the criticism that has been leveled against China, China's One Belt, One Road initiative, is a little unfair? Or do you think there is some validity to the criticism?
Well, I think that they have elements of validity here, of course. I'm particularly struck by the fact that the issue is operability, how the operation, the transparency, and how this project, each different project, carried out. What I do not agree is, not by the two ministers here, is Mike Pence's pompel kind of criticism. Now, that is, for me, that has gone too far, because I must say that Americans initially totally ignored this. When I did start doing this thing four, five years ago, I had to go to Washington, to Europe, capital, to explain. Basically, American side is dismissing this project as being a valid project to begin with. Now, suddenly, they are interested in what they call geopolitical implications, meaning challenging U.S. position in the world. There is also a grand conspiracy theory about so-called debt trap. Those kind of charges, I think, is neither fair nor accurate. But I think I have not seen this, any global project of doing, promoting infrastructure has been so vilified since the time of Vladimir Lenin, who was the one, actually, at the turn of the 20th century, launched a serious fears attack on those projects at that time. Europeans tend to forget, they have done it first. I'm talking about Canales, the Panama, I'm talking Suez, I'm talking about Transatlantic Railway, talking about the German Bogdan Railway. At that time, Lenin's charges seemed to be more accurate, because eventually led to the war. But the difference here is colonialism, colonial rivalry here. That's the background.
Thank you.
So that is something I don't agree.
Thank you for that. I think it's very fair, I suppose, to point out that there might be some operational issues, although perhaps the strategic malintent that is attributed to China sometimes, might sometimes be overstated. However, you did mention that there's a conspiracy theory about debt traps. And of course, my personal view is that perhaps debt traps, I mean, if there was any issue of the ceding of strategic assets, that was not intentional on China's part. But of course, you don't have to have a debt trap for increased influence of China. All you have to do is to integrate the region more closely to you, and you have tremendous influence. And that is not necessarily a bad thing. I think you've seen countries in the region who've had tremendous influence. I think we've heard from the United States today, we've heard from France, we've heard from the United Kingdom, all of which are countries that have exerted influence over the region. Now, the question is whether or not the influence is a benign one or less benign one. And accepting that the BRI is tremendously, has tremendous force for good in the region, can you also see that there are some concerns from countries in the region wherein they fear China's strategic intent simply by looking at other areas outside of the BRI, say, in the South China Sea, its actions towards Taiwan, its actions towards the Uighurs in Xinjiang? Is that, can you see that that might be a problem as well? And how do you think China might better address some of these issues, which are really, in some ways, undermining its relations with countries in the region?
Well, the so-called debt trap conspiracy here, there are two dimensions. Well, first of all, it would be a great exaggeration to say there is a fixed central government policy to promote this kind of project to trap developing countries into that situation. I think you overestimate the Chinese decision-maker's capability of doing that. Secondly, I would say, like every banker would know, when you give out loans or invest some big projects, you always face the problem, who traps whom in the end? It may not be China trapping the other countries, it could be the other way around. I don't want to get into technicality here, I just remind you what John Maynard Keynes famously said, "If I owed my bank £1,000, I couldn't sleep; but if I owe my bank £1,000,000, the bank cannot sleep." So it's not something as simple as you have. Now, the other thing I want to emphasize, since I'm doing this thing for a few years, I only visit less than 30% of the countries. I went to these 20-some countries of each continent to see how our operations are there. You have to look at this, each country's, the projects there, they have their own dynamics and their own life. I would say you have to analyze case by case. In some countries, yes, there is a very serious debt problem. But don't forget, this is an issue, I would say, involving the behavior or the lack of experience of Chinese SOEs, especially our financial, you know, state-owned banks. I think our financial sector is among the least disciplined, perhaps, in the world. So there are a lot of learning in the process. And SOEs also, they need to learn how to do business, you know, according to international standard. So this is, I think, is very important. China, the real challenge is to leverage financing in the long term, that is, to find foreign partners to work together. In this case, I sit next to Governor Maeda. He is in charge of this Sino-Japanese finance cooperation, and he's signed all these MOUs. I would say, you know, these are the benchmark projects, if they, you know, realize it's become extremely important, because that will help China to discipline their own system, which they cannot discipline themselves. So this is, I think, is, you know, the financial side of the story is not as simple as you may imagine.
Thanks for that. I am glad you brought in— Thank you for that. I'm glad you brought in Japan's role in the region and how China and Japan could cooperate, can cooperate. Governor Maeda, I understand that, well, first of all, Japan initially was not all that welcoming of China's Belt and Road. And as of last year, I believe, it changed its tag and it started, it decided that it would work with China to, on joint projects, including in Thailand. Could you give us some insight into how that project is going? Because I read some reports that that's not flying, which would be a shame, because I think that was touted as a potential way forward in terms of a model for collaboration between China and Japan, and China and possibly other countries as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Cork. First of all, I'd like to also express my sincere gratitude to W W S and also the Singaporean government for giving a chance to speak here. So that, in response to your direct question, I would answer in that way. Very candidly, Japan was very skeptical on the One Belt, One Road Initiative, because that's why that now Japan, as well as the United States, are not participating to the AIB. But in strictly speaking, that, my sense is that AIB is not an organization to pursue the One Belt, One Road, because it's a multinational organization. Therefore, that, there's some misunderstanding. And actually, we have been deploying our quality infrastructure to Australia, Japan, for more than seven to eight years. And therefore, that's very different from the notion of the academician or other scholar, that we are the dealmaker, we are the operator on the financial cooperation to deploy quality infrastructure. Therefore, that, let me share my experience with you. First, we signed the memorandum of cooperation, memorandum of starting for cooperation with the United States and Australia during the U.S. Vice President Mark Pence trip to Tokyo, so-called trilateral partnership on free and open Indo-Pacific. Under this framework, we agreed five disciplines: transparency, inclusiveness, viability of the project, debt sustainability, and rule of the law. These five disciplines are platform that are cooperation among the three countries on infrastructure deployment, development in the Indo-Pacific. And this is very important, because we also signed with a China state-owned bank, both Export-Import Bank with China and China Development Bank. And we signed the second MOU with the China Development Bank, which is the largest on Xim Bank, in October last year, taking the opportunities of the Prime Minister Abe's delegation visit to Beijing to have a big conference on China-Japan cooperation in third-country market. And I proposed to China Development Bank to these five disciplines as a platform. I anticipated that they would make some reservations or make comments, but the reality is that their China Development Bank very instantly swallowed everything, so that they agreed all of five disciplines. And I try to, I'm very careful that I try to avoid any room for manipulation. Therefore, initially, that we put these five disciplines in aggregate basis in the Chinese text was an international standards, it's a plural number. Therefore, I corrected that to the global standard, to the singular number, so to avoid any manipulation. And then China Development Bank also agreed to it. Therefore, in this regard, we can show that Japan or U.S., Australia, the intention is not to contain the Chinese, because we are based on the same discipline. That's very important. And also that we need tangible projects to be accomplished, otherwise, only that the talking is not, just talking is not good. Actually, we need to accomplish the LEO project. And we have been working on the project in Thailand, which is an eastern economic corridor project, which is 220 kilometers linked among the three airports in Thailand, two airports in Bangkok, and one in Utapau in the southeast of Thailand. And in Beijing meeting, Secretary General of EUC, Dr. Khanit, also participated. Both Prime Minister Abe and Premier Li Guozhen referred to his presence. So this is very clear that we are going to make the effort in the same platform, same discipline. This is very important. Any single country cannot be dominant in very free, very big region in the Indo-Pacific. And also, one anecdote. In July of last year, I was also invited by the U.S. State Department to participate to the Free and Open Indo-Pacific Forum in Washington, D.C. And Secretary Mark Pompeo delivered his keynote speech, and I was on panel— And Secretary Pompeo delivered his keynote speech, and I was in partner with my counterpart in the US, which is OPEC, and also the Australian, the Ambassador to Washington DC also attended. We signed the base brief, joint press communication. And I shared this, in this conference, I shared my experience. A month before that event in Washington DC, I was invited by a Thai Prime Minister Prayut to AKMAC Summit in Bangkok, which is a conference on the Greater American Area Connectivity Leadership. And Myanmar president there, Prime Minister of Vietnam, Laos, Cambodia, all there. And a private conversation with them, they said that we need both Japan and China in infrastructure. We need both. And they are hostile to each other, it's very, very bad for all of us, they said. Therefore, that I delivered these messages, very simple messages, to the conference in Washington DC. That they, all of these, these leaders say that way. But on the Chinese side, my sense is that the One Belt One Road is not planned or programmed. My sense is that this is a political slogan, therefore that's a lot of ambiguity. And they said that the, if it's connected between China and Europe by southwest transportation, on maritime transportation, it's very simple. But they said that Belt and Road to the Brazil or Benjira, you know, Latin American countries. So that it's very, very misconceptual, that's very hard to understand what the LEO intention of China behind the scene. So very skepticism will occur. Therefore, that I, I'd like to ask you Chinese leadership to, to, to make more clear position to clarify. And also that's like Western perspective, if it's a plan, there needs amount, and the aggregate amount, and the terms, and discipline. Without this, this looks like a political slogan and also that's a lot of geopolitical implication. That's a cause of the misunderstanding, I believe. But through the engagement with the Chinese counterpart, I'm very more positive right now that China, Japan, and maybe the other country in the West can work together to develop the infrastructure connectivity, is my big quick answer.
In terms of working together to develop infrastructure connectivity, you mentioned earlier the trilateral between Australia, Japan, and the United States. Could you tell us where, how, how we're doing on, on that front? How, has any, has, has it worked on new projects yet?
Well, from the perspective of the financial export, now in the transition period, that this morning Secretary Shanahan referred to that the cooperation among the Development Financing Institution, D F I. This is a new kind of term, new term. By definition, it is not G two G basis O D A, or Short Development Systems. And also that is not export credit, like OECD consensus base. It's a new concept, because we need a private sector, we need a private capital to finance the huge amount of demand of infrastructure. With, with only with a, the public spending, it is not possible to achieve. Therefore, that private, private, public partnership is a notion, but this is still very, not clear in, in terms of definition, what is the real meanings of the PPP. Therefore, that's what I, I did in Thailand, that I tried to persuade the Thai government to accommodate the concern or interest of the private sector. For example, that case of the High School Railway Project, initially the request for proposal by Thai government, they leaves all of the risks, like leadership risk, to the private sector, it is not possible. Therefore, that appropriate, appropriate kind of engagement in light, in light manner by the government of host country, like this case the Thai government, is necessary. So that I tried to accommodate the case, success case model of the project in UK. It's an intercity express project. So that we, I persuaded them to accommodate the lesson which we, we took from the UK case. And then the Thai government eventually accepted. That's why that the, both the Japanese private sector and Chinese private sector can, can work together. That's a secret. Therefore, that the D F I is a new concept, if I might say, I may say. So that now the, the Secretary Shanahan referred to the Build Act, Build Act. It's a new concept. And to transform OPEC and part of USAID to be a new institution named USD F I. It to be established in October this year. And also the authorization, amount of authorization, amount of budget to be doubled, as he said. But from the expert point of view, still some problem. Because by the statute of OPEC, they cannot work with a state-owned company, only private sector. They can only provide financing only private sector. So the key is not pure private, it's a PPP. Therefore, that we cannot dismiss that the load of the state-owned enterprise to play in a many case of many developing countries. Otherwise, they cannot do that. Therefore, that now they committed, I mean, the US government committed to me that the, by interpretation of the statute, they would be more flexible to make, to be able to make financing to the, to the partial state-owned enterprise.
Thank you. And I believe Minister Inkbot has been very patiently and graciously waiting to make a comment. In making your comment as well, could you also kind of address one of the questions raised by Governor Maeda who mentioned about the Belt and Road, the One Belt One Road perhaps being more of a political slogan? How much does it feel like a political slogan in Mongolia? Are you seeing concrete outcomes or more the promises of concrete outcomes?
Yeah, I think development in general and the infrastructure development in particular requires a lot of money, substantial investment. And it takes time to enjoy its results, so may create some difficulties for countries with small and medium-sized economies. So therefore, these countries, including Mongolia, try to deal with this problem through the cooperation with neighboring the regional countries, or sometimes seek for foreign assistance. And for example, in our case, almost 70 to 80% of our foreign trade export and import is dependent on China. But today, I would not focus solely on Belt and Road project initiative. But for example, in general, economically more powerful countries, by providing investments and soft loans and grants in the, in the infrastructure of the region, by doing that, they may get some comparative advantages, advantages for their own growth and in a way expand their influence. And I, I talked about our infrastructure development ambitions before. In this case, the above-mentioned factors may bring some adverse consequences and serious challenges in having the network of trans-regional infrastructures like indicated in Belt and Road project. So yes, recently, some voices have been raised that prudent relationship in this regard has not been preserved so far. And they say that sometimes the investments and loans and grants are conditioned and interests of the receiving countries are, if not ignored, and not fully met. So that's why it is, it's clear that the countries will equally benefit from such networks and investments if interests of all stakeholders are well and fairly balanced. Otherwise, it may create political and economic dependence for receivers by being offered a huge investments in the key sectors of the economy, or assistance for non-essential projects from investing sides, thus creating, as was mentioned before, massive debt or debt trap for, for the receiving countries. But at the end of the day, I think the countries are, most of the countries are free to make their own choice whether to get loans or investments from, from that kind of projects or to cooperate or not to cooperate within the framework of that kind of project.
Sure, thank you. I believe Minister Tung Tuen would also like to add to that.
Thank you, I'd like to add to the last remarks, because some are concerned that the B R I may expose countries to the risk of becoming a mesh in the debt crisis or even ceding sovereignty. I think, if we are to be frank, the potential is there. But in the end, the decision to accept or not to accept such financing rests with the recipient country and not with Beijing. So I think all countries that are looking to get financial inputs from Beijing will have to make their own decisions. So there are good macroeconomic management, transparent, enabling environment with proper controls are necessary. And of course, just mentioned by distinguished friend Maeda, there need to be adherence to the rule of law and a comprehensive debt management strategy based on sound reading of reality in our region. It is this approach that has helped Myanmar to proceed with the B R I projects that have been offered to us.
Thank you. You mentioned that the decision to accept or not accept rests with the recipient countries. Has Myanmar's room for maneuver in a sense narrowed in the past, I would say, two, two, three years? Two years perhaps, with the problems with the Rakine State causing some tensions between Myanmar's, with Myanmar's relations with the West? And also some accusations of democratic backsliding? Do you think you've seen Myanmar's options narrow?
Well, there are strategic interests at stake, but it would be naive to think there were none. But we have carefully considered all the possibilities involved in going ahead with these projects. So in the case of Rakine, the Chokpu Deep Seaport is located in Rakine. And we have absolutely no problem having pipelines connected to China, they are oil and gas, and we're going ahead with the Deep Seaport. And we will have another big project, this will be an S E Z in Chokpu. But we are doing it with care. We want to make sure that it's transparent and then it's done with adherence to the rule of law and in consultation with the local community. Because we want to make sure that the local community derives benefit from these big mega projects. And we want to make sure that it is a win-win situation for both China and Myanmar. So if we can ensure that, then these projects are bound to be beneficial and cause less problems. So we have been negotiating with China for the last three years. And indeed, we have made a headway, and this approach has helped us to secure the lowest interest rate possible for projects based on need, not want. So our negotiation strategy allows us to start small with room to grow. That is how we are approaching this. Thank you.
Thank you. And now I'd like to open questions to the floor. It's a big room, I don't think I can see the names at the end of the room, but I'll just point. But I believe I saw the gentleman over here, Dr. Gaval, please.
Thank you so much, Lynn. My question is about technical standards and norms. When China builds something, including infrastructure ports, railroads, but more importantly, the high-tech infrastructure, telecom infrastructure, 5G is obvious example, it builds it to Chinese engineering standard. Given that there are a number of countries that are choosing this standard by default, because China is the major builder, there is a group of countries which are pushed into this China universe by US sanctions, Russia is an obvious example. How do we make sure that, given the geopolitical rivalry between the US and US-led standard-setting mechanism and the Chinese standard-setting mechanism, that the two standards talk to each other? And that economic competition doesn't lead to balkanization of the global standards? And we don't return to a situation two decades back, when you arrive from Europe to Japan, you turn off your, you turn on your cellphone and it wouldn't work because it was assembled to a different standard? What's the way to prevent this and to harmonize the standard? Thank you so much.
Perhaps Governor Maeda, would you like to answer that? And Professor Xiang, if you're interested in taking a stab at that as well?
Well, this is a very good question, but it's very tough to answer your question. However, that my sense is that, first, now the, my impression through that the engagement with the Chinese counterpart is that, first, China does not have a clear intention to challenge the US-led the standards. So that they tried, because in 2001, the China joined the WTO. And because of the Chinese economic growth speed is, is too, too, you know, high speed, therefore that it's growing too rapidly. And so they need more time to make adjustment. For example, that last, yesterday in Beijing, Premier Li Kuchang said that now China is now second-largest economy, but still we are the developing countries. What is the implication of still developing countries? Means that, you know, there are some sort of allowance for developing countries to catch up. The, that's our perspective. But China is already the second-largest economy, there are no need to, to give China allowance. And also problem is data sharing. For example, the case of debt sustainability, that's now China just started with IMF on the debt sustainability study. But they do not share the data or information of debt with the Paris Club yet. That's a problem. Therefore, that China now understanding right now. Therefore, that they try to, they're now starting engaging with IMF. So now in transition, my sense, in 5G and your question on, my sense is that also that China, it's my impression, that's may wrong, maybe wrong, but they will not challenge, they have no intention to challenge that the so-called international standard led by the US. But the, but some, you know, some confusion because the United States itself is trying to destroy their own, the kind of regime that the US has created for many years. That they withdraw from the Paris Agreement on the World War Warming, they withdraw from TPP. That's, there's kind of a mis-signal that US also send it to. Therefore, that we need to sit together and work together, that make, to avoid the necessary misunderstanding.
Professor Xiang?
Yeah, I totally agree. There is no reason for China to charge to, to, to really abandon what they have benefited most from. I think it's more a question of, this is a unilateral, by and large, action on the US side, because the philosophy is quite different now. Lunatic economists, you know, that Peter Navarro would say, what's the problem for the United States? Because the United States traded away its own technological superiority because, you know, they gave all this to China. But then the issue is, what alternative? I would ask Peter Navarro, at the time China decided to open up, China decide, then Xiaobing decided to adopt this kind of approach, then Xiaobing said in public, we want, we, because we are poor with technological, you know, backward, we want to borrow the hand to lay some golden eggs. That's what then Xiaobing publicly said, it's no secret there. Now, of course, because they have become successful, then Americans thought we need to create a parallel system to drive China to into another system. Now, this is particularly important for the information technology here. Huawei for a long time is quite complacent. Now, they are facing crisis mentality, they have to do a lot to recreate a lot of stuff which is not exactly the same standard. But it's unnecessary, I, I don't think it's necessary. Huawei CEO himself said it would be absurd for Chinese to boycott. Huawei CEO himself said it would be absurd for Chinese to boycott Apple or the other. You know, it's not, you know, it's just not a valid solution for China.
Thank you. And I saw some hands there. Tamse, sorry. I cannot see at all, and I see Aaron, Mr. Aaron Connelly.
Well, since our session is about security implication, we didn't hear much discussion about this first part of the title of this session. So I asked question about security implication, starting with Minister Tung Tuen. You mentioned another deep sea port in Jiaoxiu. I wonder what's happening to the Dawai deep sea port? Isn't it part of the priority project in Myanmar or now priority has been given to Myanmar-China Economic Corridor? And then, security implication? What is the security, what are the security implication for the construction of high-speed train from Kunmin Yunnan into Laos? Certainly, it's not a commercial viable project. Laos has only seven million poor people. Not many of them are international tourists. Laos is not exporting anything on the Chinese high-speed train. So what are the security implication for China to invest and then build the high-speed train in Laos?
Since it's directed at me, I'll answer that question, but I don't represent Laos. At any rate, in the case of Myanmar, we have fifty-one to fifty-two million people, and Laos maybe has seven million. And if it's the high-speed train passing through Laos is too expensive for the Laotians, they will have to rethink how to profit from this project. In our case, as I said earlier, we're going to start with a first-phase project from Musi, which is on the border with China, to Lasho, which is halfway to Mandalay. And we want to make sure that it's not the super-high-speed trains that people are thinking about. In Myanmar at the moment, the speed of the trains are about thirty, thirty-five miles per hour. We expect the new rail link to be around ninety to hundred miles per hour. So if it's three times faster than what it was before, then it suits our purpose. That's one. The other thing is, we have a railway right now that goes around mountains and have to use the very circuitous route to get to where we want to go. So we will now have tunnels and viaducts that will cut the time to one-third of what it used to take. That is the advantage that we seek, so that goods from Myanmar can easily be exported to China. China will take anything that can be edible or that even what you may not think edible, but they will take anything. And we're exporting everything from bananas and watermelons to, you know, you name it, they want it. So we need to have some kind of fast transport that is, that would profit our farmers. Most of our people live in the rural areas and they export to China. So this would be of our benefit. And because it's not a super-high-speed train, it's not going to be that costly for the users in Myanmar. So that is the way we're managing it. We will let this project go forward and see if it is good enough to expand. Next stop will be Mandalay. With regard to the deep sea ports, we have plans to have three deep sea ports in Myanmar. Chaophu is one, and you mentioned Dawai, and we're looking at another one close to the mouth of the Arawi. This is a place called Ngayokao Bay. And if we are able to do that, we will be able to export many of the products from now and including gas because we have just discovered new gas feeds offshore. So this is what we want to do. But with regard to Dawai, I think Mr. Maeda is in a better position to answer this because he has been coordinating this. So I would ask Mr. Maeda, Maeda-san, to give us something on Dawai.
Okay, well, very quickly, that we are part of the special purpose vehicles among three countries. We represent the government of Japan and Thai government and Myanmar government. It's very slow because the size of this project is very big. And now the first phase is now two phases. First phase is conducted by one private Thai company, Italian Thai. And second one is a more government, government or three government will be more involved. But still, first phase is not quickly started yet. That's the main reason. And also that it's a very, the location, it's a deep sea port, but it's very hard to construct access road from Thai border to Dawai. It's a very mountain area and winding road. And also we need some bridges and also the construction of a highway and maybe railroad. So that's it, still far to go. So that is, it takes time. That's my point. And also quickly on high-speed way, in the case of Thailand, I propose to Chinese that to base upon not Chinese train control system, but European train control system. Because European has a lot of experience in doing the cross-border high-speed, that we did not propose the Japanese system. It's over spec, only two hundred twenty kilometers. Therefore, that maximum speed is two hundred fifty kilometer per hour. That's enough, not three hundred twenty or three hundred fifty, not, not. So that's why that I proposed to make European train control system, and China accepted.
Just before you spoke, Governor Maeda, I think Minister Tung Tuen actually highlighted some economically, what he considers economically viable projects in Myanmar that's all well and good. But I wonder whether the point made by Mr. Tamseck earlier was that, in the case of projects that have been clearly assessed by international organizations as not commercially viable, and yet you might have China being interested in them, are we then to infer any strategic intent from China? Because what could they otherwise want with this project? I wonder whether Professor Xiang could address this?
Strategic interest.
Yes, if a project has no economic viability, what other reasons could China want with it?
Well, yes, I have no doubt there is a strategic reason here, but I would say, based on quite different philosophy, if you compare with what Anglo-American world thinking about international security, international order, the key words on that side is architecture. Frankly, I never liked that term myself, being professor, allowing me to be pedantic. That's a very mechanical physics principle, therefore you have all the theories rise and fall of great powers, then China automatically put in the position to challenge, you know, as a second coming, challenge the first incumbent. Now, Chinese concept behind it, if you're thinking in strategic terms, the key word is connectivity. Now, connectivity is not just about infrastructure, the transportation, there are a lot of elements there. Xi Jinping himself identified five, so I don't want to elaborate, but there are a lot of, the whole concept, I think the difference here is how do you look at what international order, how to make international order, so-called order, stable? Chinese, I think the philosophy behind Belt and Road project does not agree in that sense with the typical Anglo-American view on security. So if you, I can elaborate even more, but I don't, I just give you some hint, what the Chinese are doing here is not built upon the idea of mechanical power distribution and military advantage balance and so on, just not there.
I believe Governor Maeda would like to say something, and then after that, Mr. Aaron Connelly, who's been waiting very patiently. Thank you.
Very quickly, that now this, throughout the cooperation with Chinese banks, I found a couple of the, some problems. For example, arbitrations. Normally arbitration is in Western standard that we rely on arbitration in third countries. But Chinese case, in China, China, Chinese loan to, say, for example, Philippine, arbitration is going to be China. That's never happened near our international standard. Therefore, I still, I think that learning stage for Chinese. And also typical case is a loan to Venezuela. We also have a loan standing with Venezuela, but it's all, it's a almost bankrupted country, right? So that no chance for foreseeable future to pay back. Therefore, we write off from the booking, but the Chinese counterpart still continue to disperse to Venezuela. So something, you know, beyond the kind of economic discipline, otherwise we cannot understand why they continue to disperse. So that's, we need, so Chinese government must explain why they are doing such way. So that's, this kind of lack of common understanding is very, really bottleneck for cooperation. But they're now recognizing it, probably.
Can I add one more thing here? I must say, yeah, I agree. Chinese government at the beginning of this BRI project made, in my view, my private view, strategic mistake, if you want to use that, the presenting this project as no geopolitical elements here. You know, our diplomats are not even allowed to use that word, geo and politics, because it's so absurd that you have so many countries involved, so many spaces, you try to separate geo from politics. You know, that word become taboo for number of years. I think it's a mistake because the idea is geopolitics automatically means leading, you know, trend leading towards war. My view is that you don't like geopolitics, geopolitics like you in the end. So now we see Americans suddenly wake up, you know, this is a problem. They fail to explain this. What is the geopolitics for peace, for purposes? At least they should have tried. Now, whether outside would buy it or not, convinced or not, but you have to say something instead of let that subject being discussed by people outside of China.
Mr. Aaron Connelly, thank you.
Thanks, Lyn. Aaron Connelly from the double I double S. Minister Tung Tuen, thanks for coming back to the Shangri-La dialogue again this year and taking our questions. It's good to see you again. As you've noted, the new China-Myanmar Economic Corridor runs through two conflict zones in the northeast and the southwest of Myanmar. And China has, Beijing has really taken a strong interest in these conflicts over the last several years through its special envoy, Sun Guo Xiang, who has made himself really central to the peace process in Myanmar. And indeed, he appears to be backing a coalition of ethnic armed groups that are opposed to further progress in the current peace process. I know that you're the Minister for Foreign Investment, but you're also the National Security Advisor. Do you believe that Chinese investment in Myanmar has been conducive to conclusion of the peace process, or has it been an obstacle or a complication? Thanks.
Thank you very much. I'm a little bit surprised that you know I'm both the National Security Advisor and the Minister for Investment, but there is a correlation in those two posts because I believe that there can be no peace without development and there can be no security without development. So what we are doing in Myanmar is to pursue a parallel process, that is, try to develop the economy and at the same time, ensure that there is peace and stability in Myanmar throughout the country. So my objective has been to ensure that there's security for every region in the country, including the border areas. So with regard to the border areas, we have to work with whoever is our neighbor, whether it's Thailand or China, India or Bangladesh, or Laos, it's the same. With China, we have a long border, it's two thousand kilometers plus. So we have to work with those groups over there and to ensure that there's peace and stability, I think the best way to ensure that is to bring development to that area. And if we have this China-Myanmar Economic Corridor that runs from the border of China to the central Myanmar, Mandalay, Nepi, and down south to Yangon, then it means that all stakeholders will be interested to ensure that it is a success. So this means China, this means the ethnic groups living on the border with China and the heartland in Myanmar. Everybody has a stake in this to ensure that the country is at peace and that it develops, there is development. Because we believe that we need to catch up with our neighbors and with the rest of the world. So when others are running, we need to take action, not just to leapfrog, but to take quantum leaps. And this is what we're doing. We would like to engage the Chinese because China is on the rise. And by doing that, we bring peace and stability to our border regions. Are there strategic interests involved on the part of China? I'm sure there may be, but has it been any other way? For example, the Marshall Plan is the same thing. So we hope to ensure peace and stability and then go forward from there to develop the country. Thank you.
And I'll take the next two questions. I think the gentleman in the middle of the table here, was it you? Oh, you, sorry. Dr. Bizley and Dr. King, thank you.
Hi, Nick Bizley from the Trobe University in Australia. The first question raised something that I think is in the shadows of all of this, and this is a kind of competitive business of infrastructure and the potential risks of kind of proxy infrastructure wars and things like that. And I was wondering what the panel might think about the prospects of Belt and Road becoming multilateralized? That's to say, you know, if you, if you buy the argument that Belt and Road is win-win infrastructure investment, and there's lots of infrastructure money on the table, why not pull it and have a properly multilateral process around evaluation, around tendering, and all that sort of thing? So I was wondering, A, what the Chinese perspective on that might be, and then from a recipient's point of view, what might a more multilateral Belt and Road type of program look like from a recipient's point of view?
Let's start with Professor Xiang. China has mentioned in the past that it would like the Belt and Road initiative to be more inclusive. This is one way of it being more inclusive. What do you think?
Yes, I think, you know, with Japan, it's already, that's a benchmark assigned here. China used to be called G1 country during the Cold War. They never liked multilateralism for a long time, until after seventy-eight years, China discovered multilateralism, they are become far more active. It seems to me, multilateralism is considered an important asset for Chinese, you know, external relations now. One thing, as I said, the big challenge, of course, is how do you leverage finance? This project is supposed to take thirty years, at least eight trillion US dollars. You know, the Silk Road Fund, you put all the Chinese money together, it's just one drop in the bucket in the long term. They have to do multilateral in the end. Chinese leaders said publicly.
Perhaps Minister Ingfort, could you address what it might look like, how the recipient country might feel about a multilateralized infrastructure development?
Yeah, in order to answer that question, I just shortly say that we are a very small country sandwiched between China and Russia. We have only two neighbors. And when we talk about infrastructure development, we have to look from this point. And there is no other way than to be a part of this big project if we are not pushing ourselves behind the paces of development or especially in infrastructure development of the region here. So we nearly think we would like to, we would like this initiative to be a multilateral one, and we would like to be a part of it. Otherwise, if you look at the map of the world, Mongolia is there like an island between China and Russia. We are not a member of the Shanghai Cooperation Organization for the time being, we're just observers. So all around us, they are the members of the SEO, and we are left like, like an island then. So we need this infrastructure network, I think that will be, or must be a part of that Belt and Road project.
Dr. King, your question, please.
Thank you. Amy King from the Australian National University. In this increasingly competitive world of infrastructure, Japan, and my question is to Governor Maeda, Japan, I think, could be described as being highly to Governor Maeda, Japan, I think, could be described as being highly creative and successful in its approaches, putting forward its own principles around quality infrastructure, multilateralizing those at the G20 in Hangzhou, working with the United States and Australia, but simultaneously, as you said, working with China. And as, to quote Professor Xiang, we have a new benchmark, if you like, for cooperation with China. But Japan is rare among US allies in working with China and engaging with China on these issues. Would you like to see more US allies do this? And how receptive have Australian and US audiences, for instance, been in your efforts to talk to them about Japan's approach to cooperation with China?
Thank you. Actually, in a trilateral cooperation among the US, Australia, and Japan, we now made a very tangible progress. We created, three of them created a special task force. We joined to dispatch a mission to the countries in potential, the project exists. And also that we are now be more flexible, try to be more flexible to accommodate concern, especially on the development stage of the project. Normally, that the mindset of the US, for example, is that the OPEC is used, was an insurer, so that they come to project in relatively later stage. Therefore, that they say yes or no is apply to this program. But now, we, what we're trying to do is to be engaged in a very initial stage of the project, we make the project bankable, and also be flexible to accommodate the deal market requirement to the practices. So that we are now moving very steady first right now. And also that the OPEC, the sent permanent staffers to the US Embassy in Japan, so that they play a role of a kind of coordinator. So that I also ask the Australian government to do the same thing, because we are totally, you know, a big, a big different time zone, and so very long distance. Therefore, that we are now in a big progress right now. On the Chinese side, as I said earlier, that we already conducted the several kind of workshop. And also that most recently, when President Trump came to Tokyo, that during the same week that I hosted a dinner for former governor of People Bank of China, Mr. Zhou Xiaochun. And he said that now China is now considering to seriously to join that CPTPP. So it's first time I have heard. No, he's not say privately, it's public, he said. And it's, we have some higher standards of the, for example, the government subsidy to SOE. So we have a lot of problems or criticism or skepticism on Chinese behavior is that because of a so-called capital, state capitalism, giving some subsidy to the state enterprise to do business in unfair manner. But now China understood that's the kind of what's the skepticism behind. Therefore, they are now very getting more serious to be a more good partner with us. So that's very encouraging in that sense. So that if it's materialized, it's very, very good. I don't know if it's already done decision or not, but he said clearly, so that it's very, very interesting.
The three gentlemen in the back, and if I could ask you a favor to identify yourself and your affiliation, please.
Yes, I'm Asanga Begunusekura, Director General of the Institute of National Security Studies from Sri Lanka. So as you know, the debt cap and predatory loans, we are very familiar about it in Sri Lanka. I think Minister Tung, as well as Director Xiang rightly identified, you had to look at this case by case, all these projects. Sri Lanka's total external debt component, 50% is owned by sovereign bonds and not by China. China's percentage is less than 15%. And this is written, I mean, it's done by, it's actually quantifiable data, it is available in, done by our researchers as well as our economic think tanks. So my question is actually to Minister Tung. We know how India looks at Hambantota. How does India look at Kuala Lumpur? And what sort of challenges do you have? I think it's all about like what PM Li mentioned yesterday, accepting China's role in the region. I think Sri Lanka, we have felt it very well about accepting the role, because our neighbor has not accepted China's BRI project. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that question. It's very interesting. I can tell you that India and China are neighbors of Myanmar, and they are both looking at Myanmar. Myanmar is strategically located, these are the two fastest growing economies in the world, and India is looking east, and it needs to be connected to Southeast Asia, it needs to be connected to Myanmar. China wants to have an outlet to the Indian Ocean. So both are competing in trying to come to the assistance of Myanmar, so to say. India preceded China, I can tell you, because India has worked on a multi-modal transport sector in Myanmar. They have been given the green light to go ahead with the Sitwe Port, which is closer to Bangladesh and Kolkata in India. So they have finished setting up, upgrading the port of Sitwe, and this will be connected through the Kaladan River to the northeast Indian states, Manipu and others, Nagaland. So we assume that the Indians would also like to have land links to Myanmar, and we have an agreement to have a road link between India, Myanmar, and Thailand. And that is proceeding quite well, and I think in a couple of years, that should be a reality. In fact, the construction has begun on the Indian Myanmar border, and on the Thai Myanmar border is already done. So within the next few years, you'll see road connecting India, Myanmar, and Thailand. And there is a new port, Sitwe has always been a, there's always been a port there, but they've upgraded that port in Sitwe. So the Indians are already there. And in fact, offshore Sitwe, there is a Shui gas field, which is jointly operated by Daewoo of Korea, Gale of India, and the Myanmar Oil and Gas Company. So India is already there. The thing that we are doing with China is that, maybe this is a good example for other countries who will be benefiting from the BRI. We have signed some MOUs with China, and we have unbundled some of the projects, which means that if we are going to do the Chaofu project, we will have the agreement with China to have different tenderings, international tendering. And some of the projects will be unbundled, and then we can have international tendering. And that has been agreed in principle by China, so we're working out on the details.
Sorry, could we have the two questions at the back together? And please introduce yourself, and then thereafter, the lady in the second row. And please also introduce yourself, and then Dr. Mo Fuzah, thank you.
Thank you. Shashank Bengali from the Los Angeles Times. Thanks for the session. I know we're here talking about security, but I thought I would ask a question about sustainability, which is also a concern in the region. Energy is a big part of infrastructure development. And then when it comes to energy infrastructure, China and Japan are the two biggest financiers of coal-fired power plants in Southeast Asia, in Africa, but a lot of them are in this region. This has fueled some allegations that China and Japan are exporting pollution and undermining the Paris Agreement. So for Professor Xiang, I'd just like to ask what your response is to that. And for Governor Maeda, do you foresee a point at which JBC might cease funding coal-fired power plants as other commercial and public banks have done? Thank you.
And the gentleman next to him, your question, please? Yes, you.
My question is about the relationship between the rising tide of the United States-China containment policy practice and the current BRI, especially in fragile states. What we have seen, for example, in Myanmar in last two years, the US funding to civil society group against a Chinese project, anti-China civil society groups being growing. So the question is where the better line is drawn, and what will be the China response to such intervention from the United States?
Perhaps we'll get one more question while you guys are thinking about it. The lady in the second row, please.
Thank you. Elizabeth Mann from the French Institute of International Relations in Paris. I have a question regarding methodology of implementation of Belt and Road. As you know, and as most of you mentioned, Belt and Road is not only about infrastructure, it's also about according to official communication, what is called policy coordination. It's one of the official pillars of Belt and Road Initiative is policy coordination. I think it's been talked about this, you should reinforce policy coordination between China and the Belt and Road countries, et cetera, et cetera. From my understanding, this translates into creating new bilateral commission or bilateral committee, bilateral institution to discuss issues of common interest. And this is launched and organized from China's side on the China Initiative. So I would be interested to know from each country's perspective, particularly here, what type of commission or bilateral committee has been treated under the Belt and Road framework? So that was my first question, at bilateral level and at political level, to what extent, or what is your view on the Belt and Road forum that was held for the edition in Beijing more than one month and a half ago? So it's a bilateral perspective and a political view on the methodology of BRI.
No takers for the last question?
No, I don't know who's supposed to answer that one. Well, the last question, let me very quickly, in the China case, of course, Belt and Road is, has a highest level, you know, leadership, so-called a small lead, used to be a small leading group at that level. So it's even above a state council. So it's a very, so the coordination with other countries, most decisions are really made at the top. I mean, it's a very small number of people involved, depending on which country you're talking about. You say bilateral, or the, you know, it's not exactly the same pattern, depending, okay? Kazakhstan, for example, you know, we have a very differences dealing with Kazakhstan. Then you're talking about the other countries in Africa and so on. So it's not exactly the same. Now, for the question of, you asked me a question about co-pilots, is that the question? Now, the specific case, I don't know enough. I have done about dozen of those case studies. If you're interested, I can tell you one, you know, co-pilot project, which I know, is in Kenya, this so-called controversy over the British Colonial Railway, which is in disuse now, so Lunet Express versus what Chinese built, Mombasa Express, the way, which is a co-pilot between Kenya and China. You know, at the beginning, the problem is, there are a lot of arguments saying, why not just use money to prepare the old colonial system? But then, of course, Kenyans decide, no, it's unrepairable. So in the end, they say, well, maybe it's Kenyan government's decision. With 90% Chinese loan, 10% Kenyans, they decide this is going to work for them in the long term. In short term, they may end up in the death situation. But it depends on what kind of co-piloting project you refer to. Yes, go ahead, yeah.
Sorry, no, I think maybe you misunderstood me. I was referring to coal power, coal-fired power plants.
Oh, you said power plant. As I said, fire plants, I don't have enough technological competence to say for sure. Sorry.
Answer to your question, the coal-fired power plants. Our position is that basically, we abide by the OICD rules, that it means that make financing to the ultra supercritical or higher technologies. But nonetheless, our policy is now, it's, you know, my goal is to make a, the financially viable project, and also that the energy best mix in host countries, this is very important. And what is the base load of power generation? Normally, that's hydro power and nuclear. But nuclear is after Fukushima, it's very difficult to deploy. And coal, we try to deduce the dependency of coal, but it takes time. We need to set forth some of the plan, medium-term plan, medium-long-term plan, for example, 2030 by 2040, we're going to eliminate coal-fired plants. However, that the, at the same times, country like Vietnam, for example, I was in Vietnam two weeks ago, I had a meeting with Prime Minister Guan Xiongfook, and I said to him, now, we need to drive your country to depend upon more or less economic, environmental Now, you're going to introduce a higher technology. For example, in terms of the level of the emission of carbon dioxide gas, the new technology which Japan possess, which is a core to gas, I'm sorry, core to gas technology named IG Shishi. IG Shishi's level of the emission of carbon dioxide gas is almost equal to the gas-fired power plant single cycle. We need to drive in direction to reduce a burden or environment, and to help the introducing a higher technology. And because of that, we created the new kind of guideline, and also that program to fill the gap of technology and commercialization. So that IG Shishi is still expensive, therefore that it had to be fully commercialized. Therefore, that we need to fill the gap, we provide funding especially for that. If I said to him that if Vietnamese government accepted this principle, we consider to make financing to that the ultra supercritical or above the coal-fired plants in already planned. But the new project, brand-new project, we're going to bring also that the support, the conversion to that gas from the coal. This is a very practical step. To abandon coal-fired plants immediately is not possible. You know, this is very important for the security, energy security for Vietnam. Therefore, that we understand this, therefore that we make kind of gradual step by step and roadmap to the goal. This is the special answer to your question.
I think Minister Tang Tung would like to say something. Actually, it would help tremendously, since it's been some time since you stated your question, if Dr. Min Zhou could repeat your question, I apologize.
My question is about, Mr. Min Zhou, my question is about the relationship between the implications of the current US-China containment policy and the BRI, especially in countries where instability and conflict is ongoing, especially for someone like the United States being funding the civil society groups in Myanmar, taking increasingly anti-China stance towards those projects. So the question is, if there is the US policy connecting the containment of China and the BRI, where the better line is drawn, countries like Myanmar?
Thank you very much for that question. I believe that the US containment I believe that the US containment of China is not just in Myanmar. The idea to contain China goes across Asia. So we have today a new Indo-Pacific strategy as opposed to the BRI. So this is part of the US reaction to the BRI. In Myanmar, we have begun on the road to democracy. So it's only been a couple of years that we have moved into the democratic realm. And so we've allowed the setting up of NGOs. And there are probably more NGOs in Myanmar than in Singapore. So that's, so we have a lot of NGOs. And these NGOs are registered and they're doing a lot of things in different sectors, education, health, infrastructure. So we can expect that some of them are funded from various sources and they have their own agenda. That may include trying to oppose the BRI. But in any case, what we are doing is to ensure that this is of benefit to our own country. So what we do is, this also partly answers the question from the lady at the back. The BRI is considered by a committee in Myanmar headed by the State Consulor Olsasuchi herself. And it includes the ministers from nine ministries. For example, the Minister for Construction, the Minister for Transport Railways particularly, and for Energy. And they decide which projects are ready for the picking, the early harvest projects, then we proceed. Of course, in the country, since this is a democratic country and we have a free press, the media can voice their opinion. They have, there are a lot of articles writing, there are reports against the BRI, there are others who support it. But for the government itself, we want to get the fundamentals right via relationships driven by pragmatic blend of principle and practicality. We need to develop. So what do we do to develop? At the moment, the funding is not coming from the international financial institutions. So we need to find the funding from somewhere. At the same time, we'd like to ensure that it is in the strategic interests of the country. So that's how we are dealing with this. Thank you.
By the way, that we have been coordinating very closely with the US government as well. But I do not agree that the Free and Open Indo-Pacific Initiative is aiming at the containing China. It's not true. We are not intention to contain China. Therefore, that we are, as I said earlier, that we try to make these two different tracks, Free and Open Indo-Pacific Trilateral US-Japan-Australia and Japan-China in cooperation in third countries. We base upon the same five disciplines. It's the global standard. So that's, and also the Secretary of Monpehl said in a conference in July in Washington DC last year, that the United States is not containing and also that China and be more engaged. He said that the United States to be engaged in the Indo-Pacific region by means of this. Because of the size of the budget the United States prepare is way smaller than Belt and Road. But there's no intention to contain by this.
And the final question from Dr. Fuzha, please. A short one and short responses. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to build on previous questions about the potential multilateralization of regional infrastructure development. And my question is directed to Minister Tung Tung. Thank you, sir, for patiently explaining to us the pragmatic motivations of the kind of policies and the choices you have in terms of pursuing Myanmar's infrastructural needs. But it builds on, my question builds on this thing about the US interest in, I guess, offering its expertise and strengths where they can add value. And so in the context of Chao Phiu, this is one of the mega projects where Myanmar has exercised its agency in renegotiating the project terms and so on. So really, in terms of enhancing transparency and capability in assessing project viability, even though the US probably cannot compete with the China dollar-for-dollar, perhaps, Minister, could you elaborate further on the potential, from the viewpoint of a recipient country, this offer of technical assistance by the United States? And, you know, whether this could probably lead in the future towards more sustainable and quality infrastructure development? And related to that, of course, is when you're talking about consulting the people, I'd like to know about the people in Myanmar in the post-conflict areas and the kind of infrastructure development investments that would be taking place in these post-conflict areas, such as to avoid future internal security imbalances. And finally, to all the panelists, my center has done a survey among Southeast Asian policy elites about how they view different countries and powers, shall I say, in terms of ensuring peace, security and governance globally. Japan has come out tops in the trust factor. And China and the United States have fared equally dismally in the distrust factor. So if any of the eminent panelists would like to give their views on that, thank you.
Perhaps we could just leave it at your earlier questions rather than the last one, because that has less to do with infrastructure development, although it might be related. So perhaps you could address the question.
Let me start and then I'm sure the other colleagues will join in. First, with regard to how we are approaching all this is that it would be good if the, some of the mega projects in Myanmar had the component from other countries, multilateral. So I will give you a good example. We have a project bank. This is a digital platform where we publish the projects that we would like to accomplish in the next decade in Myanmar, for example. And then there are countries and PPP, private-public partnership entities that want to jump on the bandwagon, so to say. For example, Japan has started with some feasibility study to upgrade the railway from Yangon to Mandalay. So, and that is in the project bank. The Chinese are also interested to come in as part of the BRI, the Mandalay-Yangon rail link. But the Japanese have already started on it, on the feasibility study. They started earlier, two, three years ago. And now they have started the construction part of the project. So that is how we are dealing with the multilateral part of these projects. Earlier, I said we tried to unbundle these projects. So we have given this Yangon-Mandalay project to the Japanese. And this was originally something that the Chinese were seeking to do. We may, in the end, give another line to the Chinese. It could be super fast train. But at the moment, as I was saying earlier, we need to have trains that are efficient. They don't need to be going at 300 kilometers per hour. What we need to do is to double or triple the speed that we are used to at the moment. So we work with other countries, with China. Together with China, there's Japan and there's India also working on some of the railway projects in Myanmar. And the construction of railway carriages, for example, India is involved. So that's how we are trying to bring on board different countries in different projects in Myanmar.
Well, it's with great regret that I'll have to call this session to a close. I think some of the key takeaways for me has been that it's impossible for something of the scale and scope of infrastructure development that's going on currently to not have strategic implications. However, the experience of the two countries at least that happened on this panel has been largely positive, though there have been operational issues, which countries like Japan are seeking to help with. And working together multilaterally could be an option as well, moving forward. It leaves me only now to thank my wonderful speakers, Minister Inkbot, Minister Tung Tung, Governor Maeda and Professor Xiang. Thank you so much. And thank you to all of you out there for your excellent questions and participation today.